Youth admission into Marshall White for youth between ages three to seventeen. Just to note, this is no cost to the citizens. And also, there is a revised ordinance language if the council staff is prepared. If we wanted to just do the jail purchase and not reallocate the three or the three million for the Union Station and Allabilities Park and leave that in the allocated for future projects line item. So, the proposal before you is to adopt the proposed ordinance.
Coralie, can I?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question real quick?
Uh huh.
And I didn't ask this last week. On the, um, sorry, wherever it went, the last.
Oh.
Can you go back one?
Yes, of course. Last time I didn't move forward slides, I remembered two this time.
The scholarship for the Marshall White Center?
Yes.
The fifty-eight thousand? Is that like the first of money, first of any funds to go towards that? Or is that in addition to, will this be in addition to any other funds we already have for that?
I am unsure, and I don't know if Lisa has any information on that. Sorry, I'm stepping in for Justin.
I think it's a great idea. I was just curious if we're trying to get to a certain like threshold.
We're not, this is a rebate that the city earned. The discussion was to use it for additional capital outlay or use it for the scholarships. And the proposal the administration wanted to put forward was for scholarships. That doesn't mean that the council couldn't appropriate money, but this would just be a one-time source. There was an additional twenty-three thousand that was given to us to help with swimming lessons, so it will treat it the same way, and it will go towards admissions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I add to that response too? The scholarships, the grants, the grant from the Government Employees Health Association for swim lessons, that's all part and parcel to how we're approaching the financial model of the entire facility and how we can still provide for a high-quality opportunity and high-quality facility, high-quality programming, while using a membership-based approach. The past approach was really based a lot on drop-ins and day use, and we're purposely leaning toward a monthly and annual membership for, so that kids and families can build habits of health over time, but it also gives us the ability to predict revenues better, and we want to make sure that everybody has access and opportunity. And so, we already have had a number of people take us up on the discount opportunity, but this is to make sure that everybody has opportunity if they can't pay at all. And so, scholarships for free, reduced, and also a tiered approach for resident and non-resident, making sure that non-residents help offset costs for residents. It's all part of a bigger picture for an approach that allows access for everybody. And we are in additional discussions and are welcoming other partnerships for other corporate sponsors that want to add to scholarship opportunities.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing on just this budget amendment. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come up and state your name.
Hi, Travis Pate. As I look at the dynamic of the Make Ogden Plan and the expansion and growth of the municipality, I think I had even written a few things into as public comment, which is Olmstead talked about the public space and park, and the jail slowly encroached into the park, which actually was originally roadway, if you look, with Lake Street coming through, and then Kiesel used to go through. And so, we kind of reclaimed that as park space, but then the jail, the county claimed it back as jail space. And so, if it's possible, I think that, to me, it's just whatever you decide, the jail does probably need to go when other circumstances allow that to be moved. The Kiesel facility and the works, the work thing is still between us and the county, but I think it's a tremendous thing that needs to be re-instituted, and we need to talk to them and say whatever we can do, because I have friends that would have completely lost their jobs if it wasn't for work release. And so, obviously, we just need to see what sites are available for them for that. But for reclaiming the downtown, I think it's very significant. This building reclaimed part of the downtown because it's right where Lake Street went through, the old firehouse, the old city hall, which was built by David Echols. But when that was dedicated, they said, oh, it's not going to be big enough, even when that was dedicated, and they dreamed of something like this. So, who could have seen like what their dreams must have been back then for a stately as that Second Empire Building was? I wish it was still there, because I think we could have used it effectively, but I just think that it's a very significant thing. So, whether you decide the five, the eight million or the five million, a hundred percent, please agree with this.
Great. Thanks, Travis.
Laura Lewis, Ogden City. I've not been following this very closely, but I'd like to know why we have to destroy the building. Could it be repurposed for something else? And is there a plan now? Will the city keep that and potentially expand this back into park, to expand the park? Yeah, that's it.
Great. Thanks, Laura.
Hi, Heath Soto, Ogden resident. I, is this just for the first part or both parts of, there's two options for this one? Speaking to both, I guess. One thing I couldn't find of the five million allocated for the jail, how much is for the purchase versus demolition? Just curiosity. And does funding option two remove or delay budgets for Union Station and the Allabilities Park? I just wasn't real clear on that. I wasn't able to thoroughly read the packet multiple times today, so, thanks.
Check anywhere else. I can't see online.
Looks like there's a hand online.
Great. There's, there's one person online. It says Linda's iPhone.
Hi, Linda Sanchez. I'm assuming you can hear me.
Can, thanks, Linda.
Yeah. I do want to just say thank you again for making this available. Unfortunately, I'm out of town helping some family that are, had some difficulties, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to stay engaged in the community, even when I'm not necessarily there right now. As far as allocating the funds to help with the Marshall White for people that need some help with, you know, their, their memberships or whatever, I do, I do appreciate that because, you know, especially with these young youth, if, if we don't find stuff for the youth to do, they will find stuff for the youth to do, and generally, it's, it's not favorable later on. Sometimes, it's, sometimes idle hands are not necessarily a good product. And being able to go and, you know, use those facilities as an outlet, I, I feel like sometimes a lot of our youth are, are put into situations that they're not quite sure how to handle, and sometimes just being able to go and take it out on the field, or take it out on the swimming lessons, or whatever that, like that, sometimes you can really help your mental health and to, sometimes to not respond to necessarily the negative things that happen in your life. I do appreciate that. I, I re, I, I have to be honest with you, I haven't had a chance to read the packet, but just as far as what I was listening to, moving the jail, you know, we have so many family and community events that is right downtown. I'm, I'm thinking that's probably a good idea. With that being said, I don't believe that, I'm not in favor of the police being tyrants that we have to be like placed in jail for multiple things. A lot of things I feel like we overuse the jails for, that we could actually have people work in the community and actually help benefit the community, because once you are in the community and help the community, sometimes that helps make you realize how much your behavior actually affects good or bad for community and yourself. And as far as that goes, I yield back on that.
Thanks, Linda.
Chair not seeing any other movement, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Myers, to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have a few things to answer. I think that I, I will look towards the administration, who's been working quite a lot with the jail and the county commissioners, but just, there were questions about.
Reuse of the building.
The reuse of the building, the jail work release, purchase.
Yep.
Destruct or tear down.
Balance of funds, etc.
Demolition.
Yeah, I kept notes. So, Travis, on the work release, it is an option that has not been available for quite some time. So, the proposal, and this gets to the question about the balance and the direction of the funds, how much would be for demo, how much would be for site rehabilitation, how much for purchase, etc. The, the purchase price is not set, so we're in discussions with the county about that. But what we're proposing is that, we know the value of the building from an appraisal standpoint, we have some estimates on what it would cost to demo it, and we also know that we have additional need for work release at the, in the city and in the county. We know that we have needs for mental health capacity in the jail, we know that we have needs for winter overflow and for summer code-red shelter, etc. And so, we're proposing that the balance of the funds after purchase and demo would go toward a shared complex and a shared proposal that could be used as leverage and matching funds for potentially county funds and state funds to go and help build the, the work release beds, or the, add to the mental health plans that they already have, and to do code-red and code-blue as well. So, the purchase price doesn't necessarily matter in that regard, as much as it just matters that the funds are carried through and pushed through to the future project at 12th Street for additional, additional space. The question about can it be repurposed? One of the benefits for our position and is, gives us a good leverage is that the facility, in our understanding and through our assessments, is in significant disrepair. It's not in good shape for reuses. It's, it would take a significant amount of investment to get it up and running, is our, our understanding, and so I don't think it's in a good position to be repurposed. It doesn't meet seismic standards of today, etc. And so, we, we feel in its current condition, if we were to get access to it, that we would remove that impediment to our downtown and just create the space that we want for our I think that covers the Kiesel piece. There was the question, does it delay the Union Station and the Allabilities Park?
Yeah, I'll address that. We asked, we asked for the alternate language only because we haven't had a really in-depth conversation around any of those, or the use of those funds, excuse me. So, we just, that, that was why we asked for the alternate language. So, it would be, it would not be allocated to anything else, and as the administration would come forward, we would have the same questions and be able to question them as far as where they're, where are we going to put the Allabilities Playground? What does that mean? And so, some of those things, so that's all.
And you've probably heard me say it a hundred times in various meetings, but the Allabilities Playground, with some limitations, we know, was intended to be a first step, first phase. That was a project that I've been championing to get completed, so that we can start a second phase, which this money is intended to be seed, that could be leveraged and matched for partner contributions and donations. So, I do look forward to committing the funds in final and having a plan and a proposal from Dyno Park that builds on the lessons learned of the first phase. So, probably worked out okay in the long run, but I do look forward to having a finished product eventually. But it's going to require a capital campaign to finish the funding, but I want to make sure that we provide something that they can build on. That's always one of the challenges when you do a project like that.
I think you hit them all, I think. Let me just, okay. Any other questions? Council comments, or council questions? Need a motion, whatever.
Chair, if, if there's not any discussion, I'll just put this motion out, just because I agree, I think there probably is some more discussion on those two other items, not that I disagree with them in any way, I just feel like that would be appropriate. And so, I would propose that we adopt proposed ordinance 2025-21, the alternate funding or alternate version. I don't know if there's any other clarifying.
Option two.
Option two. Yeah.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Vice Chair Hyer, to adopt the option two of the proposed ordinance 2025-21. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye. That passes. We look forward to seeing those. I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, I, I think it, I feel like the same as Councilmember Ritchie. I don't have any, any instant grief about it, either one of those. I just would like the discussion, and I think, you know, public discussion is appropriate in those, in those cases, and would be willing to do it at any time.
All right. Next on our agenda is the staffing document amendment. Not sure who's, Coralie, you back up?
Okay, so the next item is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 staffing document. This proposal is to add five authorized, or sorry, five positions that would allow for advanced hiring of firefighters. These are not budgeted positions. It just allows the fire department to hire and, hire in advance for anticipated vacancies. Chief Matthew is here to talk through the operational part of this and how it can be advantageous for the fire department, and, so, any questions on the budget side of it?
Okay. Not yet. Great. Don't go far. Chief.
Council chair, council members. The purpose for this is pretty much similar to what the police department has done for a number of years, and it's, it's a way for us to use this tool to do a couple of things. One, to not have a gap or an opening for so long that we either are affected by a level of service, or we're affected budgetarily by excessive overtime backfill. Those are the two operational impacts. The reality of it is, it's a tool that we would want to use sparingly and selectively when we have an opportunity where we know there's going to be an opening or a group of openings coming, but there's a period of time before they occur, meaning that they've given us notice up to two weeks to a month that they're retiring or leaving, resigning, and we're not able to really act upon available great candidates until the opening actually occurs because of the limitation of the staffing document. So, by having these float positions, we're able to not only recruit, but, but seek out either lateral candidates or other high-quality candidates that, at the time, we're kind of in transition. When I first started as chief, we would establish one hiring list, it had lasted an entire year, and by the time we got to the number ten candidate, it was time to do a new list because the quality of the candidates had dropped off. That's not the way, the last five, six, seven years, we were competing, and, and we were doing hiring lists three, four, and five times a year, and we were just trying to find eligible, capable candidates sometimes, and we couldn't get to the cream of the crop because we couldn't be nimble or quick enough, and we had civil service where it was really a laborious and time-drawn-out process. Now, we're, we have a nimble hiring process, but it still takes, from the start of announcement to getting them to our training academy, it's upwards of thirteen, fourteen weeks. And if we have this gap before we can make an offer to an individual that's a very high-quality candidate, the new hire candidates are told when they get out of cadet school to apply all along the Wasatch Front. And a firefighter, because of our work schedule is a forty-eight ninety-six, they work for two days, and then they're off for four. The travel and commute is not nearly as significant of an issue as it, it is for maybe someone working five days a week or four days a week. And so, to travel once a week to their job for a forty-eight-hour shift and leave, they, it's not that big of a deal to go to five or six, seven fire departments from here to Salt Lake. So, for us, we want to be competitive enough to be able to offer the position when it's available, when we know the opening's there, and this high caliber candidate is being interviewed by three or four different fire departments at the same time. And so, being more nimble to be able to make this offer sooner, getting that, that person trained sooner than, than waiting for the opening to occur will give us some time to be able to not have these gaps in service and the higher cost of overtime. So, that's what it's for. We understand that they're not funded positions, it wouldn't be a tool just used because it's allocated, be used when the opportunity presents a situation where we want to take advantage of it and, and get a commitment out of a high-quality candidate before they commit to another department.
Chief, just a question, why five, not ten or three, or is there significance to five?
Typically, we would do things in, in series of three, because we have three shifts, and, and the impact is, is, we can, we can spread it out amongst the three different shifts. But five is, is, I think, ample, because the reason I want the limitation of five is so we don't get into a situation where we overextend ourselves budgetarily. And I think five is also enough to where, if we do have a, some, and I'll give you an example, this month we had an announcement that was two weeks and only two weeks, and it was kept to the individual until they, they said, I'm retiring in two weeks, and that's all notice we had. I've had another one that was two months' notice, and so, that advanced planning and that the difference between employees deciding when they're going to let us know gives us that flexibility. So, three would be the minimum. I think five is a good number because it gives us a little bit more flexibility in case we have some unannounced, rather short notice resignations.
Any other questions? All right.
Now I understand why I didn't get hired. I was number five on the list, they took the first four, so.
There were other reasons.
I'm, I'm glad you said that.
You know, if I wasn't retired, I probably wouldn't have said that.
It's okay.
Thank you, outgoing Chief Matthew. Yeah, and I only, I, I think I've, I've said this a couple of times, if we are at, at a hundred percent, the way that we have used our vacancy dollars in these departments to help with, with bonuses and COLA and things like that, that, I, I just am more of a concern, but that's, the good outweighs some of that, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate the use of the words sparingly and selectively, and with a mind on the budget. I see the advantage of this tool, and with those things in mind, I think it's a really, it's a, it puts Ogden's Fire Department in a competitive position with regard to bringing in really top-quality recruits. I think it, it really helps, you know, the, the thing that was compelling to me is the, they wouldn't have to use many overtime hours, things of that nature, I think that probably has some, it will certainly offset itself that way. I think we do need to be in a position where we can take the best and brightest as, as quickly as possible, and this allows that.
Yeah. All right. Ready for a motion? No more other comments?
Chair, I'll make a motion then.
Is this a public hearing on this, or?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you. This is a public input. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this, please come up and state your name, Sorry, I turned my page, so, thank you.
One online.
Linda? Hold on. You're unmuted, Linda.
Linda Sanchez, I just want to say, there's probably one thing that a homeowner would not want to have happen would be to have a fire and to have somebody come in and have no experience and say, hey, I just got, I just got hired, and I'm not quite sure, our department did things a little differently, which our fire department is the most professional I've ever seen, which, though, this would not happen ever there, but sometimes when you are down and out people, sometimes you're needing bodies to do whatever they can. And definitely, training and cooperation in the, in the department, I could only imagine is probably the most essential thing, to have things run like butter, you know, smooth, sailing. I'm just going to tell you, every apartment, or every time I've ever had to call on the Ogden City Fire Department, they're amazing. They're utmost the best. We should be praising them very well. And if, if we can help people by getting some, just some top-notch people to do that, and obviously, the chief has done an amazing job, and I'm sure he's training his predecessor to, to understand that this could be a tricky situation, you could kind of screw yourself, or I shouldn't say that, that's not very good, but you could either make things harder on yourself and the community with this, or you could actually help to make sure that you have the, the best and most professional department. So, I am in favor of it with the, just like everyone else has said, sparingly and realizing that this could potentially, you're going to have to watch it. But experienced people are experienced people, and they're, they're worth the time that the community, sometimes it doesn't come at the same time that you have an opening, so sometimes you have to jiggle things around. I yield back, and I have only good things to say about the Ogden City Police, or Fire Department.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else?
Chair not seeing any movement, I would make a motion, we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Vice Chair Hyer, to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2025-22.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Ritchie, to adopt proposed ordinance 2025-22. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye. That passes. Good work, guys.
Thank you very much.
Outgoing.
I'll give you a little slack, I might come out there, Chief.
Watch out for the retirement.
She's not kidding. Better be it. Next on our, on our agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council on any concerns or ideas. Please come up, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Laura Lewis. I got a lot to say. First thing, just a question. Whatever happened to the Hundred Cities Solar Project with Rocky Mountain Power? Next thing, I visited the water treatment plant and was very impressed with that facility. I think you guys were supposed to be there and canceled just before I got there. I wondered if I had something to do with that, but anyway, it was amazing process, and the people up there were so committed to what they're doing up there and doing a good job looking for ways to be more effective. We even, I talked to them about taking the residual product they removed from the water and using it, the green waste, and they're already doing that. So, they're all over it. Then, next, the green waste, I love that place. That's one of the best things Ogden City's got. Great people, great products up there, I love that place. And the people, just like every place I go in Ogden City, the only place they The only place the people I argue with are you guys. Everybody that works for you, they're pretty good. They, Green Waste, those people are so helpful up there and just willing to do anything. The place is always squeaky clean and just a great experience all the time. Lester Park, I love that idea. I like things like this where people can attend something, bring their families, and it doesn't cost them anything. It's like what we used to do when I was a kid. Families went to the park. They didn't spend a dime. I spoke with a person at one of the meetings about Wonder Block. He is very concerned because he's a low-income person. He says, "There's nothing there I'm going to be able to afford to do." So I would hope that the city would focus more on things like this and less, more of a balance. I know you want the revenue, but sometimes you've got to take into consideration quality of life. And will the pickleball courts have lights? Also, the issue of speaking time, that is going to be very difficult to do fairly, I think. When you start trying to say, "One person can have three minutes, another time you only get one." I think you're going to have to set some kind of guideline so it becomes impartial. Also, one thing, and this really alarmed me, what I saw, I saw Realtor, a real estate company marketing Ogden as a spillover option, well, that's not their terms, a spillover option for Park City, that real estate up there is getting so expensive, "Come to Ogden and buy Ogden." I don't know if you people share that philosophy, but I'm worried about the people who live here now being able to afford homes. I think the people that are here should have some kind of protection that, and I know this is kind of walking a fine line, but they need to be able to have homes, affordable homes. And how are you going to combat this type of thing? Time up. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. You're getting faster at your words. I know. You're fast now.
I had to get a line in.
I know. I tried to write them down.
Here's my notes.
We'll go to Linda's iPhone while some are walking up, it looks like.
Hi, Linda Sanchez. I have to tell you, the other day when I was out of town and I heard about that fire up on the hillside, it brought me back to a previous council meeting where Councilman Graff was talking about his concern about this and what we should be doing differently to protect people. I just want to say, I want to send my prayers and everything like that with the family that lost their home. But I do kind of feel like we might need to revisit this. You know, I lived in a small town called Loveland, Colorado for a while and they did not have fireworks. They had a little, it's a city park and they have water and they would waterski on the city park. And they would shoot it, shoot the fireworks off from around the park so that if anything happened, it would go into the water. And I just think with things, how things have been changing and everything like that, I mean, nobody wants to lose their home. Nobody wants to have to go through that. I just, I was coming home that. I was coming through, it was last year, when I was coming home from my nursing, I was trying to get back to my house and I felt like it was a war zone. And to try to maneuver in the city on the streets, and I'm going to say, I really, I personally don't care about the fireworks other than probably about seven years prior, I saw a neighbor almost start another neighbor's garage on fire and it went underneath a vehicle. And thank goodness, everything was okay. But just in a split second, you can affect somebody's life that, and your own. And some of those things that happen, we can't get people back. It just might be something to think about in the future. Laura, I appreciate, I appreciated all your comments. But I just think there might be some truth to that and there might be some ways that we could bring more community together to do something like that. But it's obviously not one person's plan. It would be everybody's. But then maybe how we can keep each other more safe? I don't know. Just a thought. Sending blessings again to that family. God bless.
Thanks, Linda. All right. Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Nadolsky, council members, and fellow residents of Ogden. My name's Malik Dayo and I'm here tonight as a voice for those most at risk in our community, particularly with the looming ICE raids causing fear. Let me be clear, my advocacy is not a personal attack on the mayor or the administration. It's about addressing the real fear people are living with. Fear of family separation, fear of arrest, and fear of being forced to leave their homes. This fear doesn't only affect undocumented immigrants. Even documented individuals and U.S. citizens have been arrested by masked ICE agents, creating a climate of fear that impacts everyone regardless of their status. I'm not asking you to protect criminals or people who are here illegally. What I'm asking for is leadership that makes it clear. This administration stands firmly against federal overreach and the use of U.S. military in our city. Vocal opposition to federal overreach and the tactics of federal immigration enforcement will show Ogden prioritizes its residents over federal actions. Beyond public statements, I propose that the city take immediate action to protect its community by implementing Know Your Rights campaigns, distributing multilingual informational materials and offering legal support resources to those who need it. These efforts will help ensure that residents know their rights, reducing the likelihood of abuse, and will create a safer environment for everyone in Ogden regardless of their immigration status. This city's hands are not tied. That's a lie. We can take action now and we should. Lastly, I respectfully address a point made by the mayor suggesting that if any rights are violated during federal enforcement, legal action could be taken afterward. While I agree that people should seek justice, I believe we must prevent rights violations from occurring in the first place. I'm not asking the city to break the law or defy legal measures. Rather, I'm asking for proactive steps that ensure we don't have to deal with the violations later. Lastly, I respectfully address a point made, okay, sorry about that. Okay. By educating the community, providing legal resources and making it clear, public statements against federal overreach and military involvement, we can prevent these violations from ever happening. So I ask you, mayor and council members, to take a stand today. Let's show Ogden that our city government is committed to protecting all our residents and standing firm against federal overreach. Finally, the administration shouldn't play victim or go silent when the pressure is put on them to answer difficult questions. And Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Graff, thank you for being the only ones that had the decency to respond to my emails. That speaks volumes for the rest of you.
Thanks, Malik.
Heath Soto, Ogden resident. Just to piggyback on that for a little bit, I do think we need clarity about what our police force's role will be when the public, documented or otherwise, doesn't trust that the police force is there to protect them and their community. It reduces reporting of crimes. It reduce, it makes the community less safe and goes exactly counter to what is trying to be accomplished by rounding up criminals. And I'm all for rounding up criminals. But I think our police force should be left out of that and I think we need some clarity on that. As to the public comments thing, we would only be reducing the amount of time and/or spent on comments per person or in total when there's a lot of people here. And when there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of people that have never been here. A lot of people that rarely come here, and this is something that's very important to them. And if they come here expecting a certain amount of time to be able to speak their mind, even if it's repetitive, even if it's something you don't want to hear, even if we've got to stay super late, I think it just leaves a bad taste when we ask, when we ask the public for more input and more involvement and then when they finally do take time away from their families, away from work, to do that, they end up getting cut short. And I think, I've heard, you know, been on this side of the dais for like seven or eight years now and I hear a lot of people, when we do have cut times, people, it leaves a real sour taste in their mouth and they come away not liking what happened. So just something to consider when you're talking about that. And let's see, how much time I got left? Real quick. The park, I just want to make sure, I have a little bit of concern with the color scheme as I saw it right now. It's kind of matches the corner and Donkey Plaza and I think it's getting to be a bit much with the bright '80s colors. I think it works in certain little spots, but, and I don't think we want a pickleball court that's super bright colored, do you?
I might.
Okay. I get blinded easily. But that's it, thanks.
If it's lit.
All right, thanks, Heath. Any other comments?
Hi, Deborah Derrington. Again, with my passion for history. And as I've given a lot of thought from interacting, I have more questions than answered, but maybe something that can be put into consideration. The process of trying to figure out how to get a connection between city and landmarks has proven to be difficult, not only for me, but for my architect, who have approached it multiple times. We aren't quite sure, and it's not made clear exactly, how detailed drawings need to be for projects that we're doing. And so to be better safe than sorry, I have, to meet a really tight deadline, put close to $8,000 into plans. And as we met today, we still weren't sure if we had enough to present because we can't afford to have that not pass and have to wait another month for landmarks to meet. And we're not getting those answers from Haley. So we need a liaison somewhere in between there that can kind of make that connection. As a way of preserving the buildings, I saw that the stockyard is coming, is like, it's in some dangerous territory. And I love preserving historic buildings, but they are time-consuming. They take a lot of patience and they are not at all like regular construction or renovation. For instance, just today, we were simply planting, transplanting seven boxwood. And we started at 8:00 a.m. and we completed. And Fabrizio was one of my fastest, most meticulous, hard-working individuals on my team. And at 5:00 o'clock, he finally completed planting seven boxwood. The problem is, on this historic building, we came into decades and decades and decades of people making changes and revisions and things that are in there. So we ran into sprinkler lines, roots this big, electrical lines, buried dominant lines that we, or dormant lines that we didn't know. So those are things become very costly and very expensive and we anticipate those. But if there is a way for the city to meet us partway on that, maybe waiving some of these fees on permits. And definitely, as I see the time clicking down, I would desperately ask, beg, plead, borrow, please be very mindful of what is going on in the corridors of especially our historic districts, where we have multiple, multiple expensive historic homes that the city has invested much of their money in rehabbing and getting back to single-family dwellings. We are seeing that our borders are being so encroached upon and I am seeing it more this summer than I have ever seen to where I didn't used to lock my doors, now I lock them behind me every time. I lock all of my belongings down. So some food for thought, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Travis Pates. One dynamic that, just like echoing my neighbors, is the historic preservation aspect. Strong suggestion would be removing landmarks from Planning Division and putting it in Neighborhood Development because Neighborhood Development is, who did the Jefferson Avenue Historic District? Wasn't landmarks, it wasn't Planning Commission. It was Neighborhood Development. And then they came and then everybody else came on board and we ended up with some amazing infrastructure that we, I think, are missing out on. And I think the one thing with Planning Division, an ordinance needs to be changed. I submit something for Landmarks' consideration and nomination. They ho-hum for over six weeks and then use an ordinance against me that says, "Oh, we have 60 days to act. So you now have two weeks, Landmarks Commission, to act on Mr. Pates' petition that he filed over six weeks ago." Wow, I just got beat up because Planning Division decided not to act on it and ho-hummed and hawed, hemmed and hawed about bringing it to Landmarks Commission. "You don't really want me to do all this work, do you?" They said in a September meeting as they pushed me to the October meeting. And then they said, "Oh, now you have till November to act on this." Why are we getting beat up when we're just simply trying to preserve the town? And how is it not a conflict of interest when Planning Division just comes into my neighborhood and says, "Bulldoze this, build 24 townhomes," not even looking at the historic aspect of the Critten home? And the individual didn't even own the property of the Critten home, but Planning Division agreed with it. Didn't send it to Landmarks first. I've asked continuously that we actually, for the Central Metrodental District as well as others, that any front yard addition, side yard addition, rear yard addition or demolition possibly be reviewed by Landmarks Commission. But it's a complete conflict of interest when a developer comes in and built, and we taxicamemb finance Adams Avenue right next to the William K. residence. And it's just outside the Adams Avenue CRA. So we're using Adams Avenue CRA to bully the neighbor on the same block with regards to historic preservation. View Corridor, Vista Preservation, access to light, that's all part of our general plan. And yet we've just, we're going to build a skyscraper, almost like a batteries-not-included, right next to the William K. home, which was four generations in the same family. William K., founder of K'sville, his home's here in Ogden, but we just said, "Yes, finance it. Let's build it right to the property line. Let's encroach downtown into the residential district." So something really needs to be done overall besides just us spending money on a plan that we haven't consulted. Preservation Utah for the historic preservation, we haven't consulted with Envision Utah with regards to land use and transfer development rights. We're just saying, "We'll do it in-house with one consultant." And we have so many able-bodied people. We've seen that with all of our team efforts for the activities that we do here. So let's please do it for the general planning of our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. That's a record to see. We'll go online to Trace's iPhone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you. Thank you for taking my call. I apologize that I cannot be there in person tonight, but I am obligated otherwise. This is Teresa Bramwell and I have just a couple of frustrations to vent. First of all, I have a suggestion about the police station. We used to have a police substation on 25th and Monroe. And when we had that police substation on 25th and Monroe, there was infinitely less crime there than there is today. I think it has been well noted that there is an enormous amount of crime on 25th and Monroe. I don't know where the criminals are coming from exactly. I've been trying to figure that out. I have a few ideas of where they're coming from, but I think the police presence that used to be there helped with the, keep the crime at bay for the residents and property owners that are trying to exist there. The second idea I want to talk about is I contacted a commercial real estate agent that claimed to be the best in the Ogden area, that he... that claimed to be the best in the Ogden area, that he controlled 40% of the commercial market in Ogden City. And I was having a conversation with him about my property, looking for options to do with it, either put in a tenant or find a new owner that might have some ideas to do with it or do a lease on the land. I came up with lots of different options. And he seemed to think that those all suck really bad. And the only option for commercial property in Ogden is to demolish the buildings and sit on vacant land. That is what he has done with his personal property. He told me he owns multiple lots in the block next to mine, between 24th and 25th on Monroe. And that is what he has done with his personal property. He's purchased buildings and demolished them and then sits on the vacant land for many, many years. And he said that is the best option for properties in Ogden. So I don't agree with that. I think that idea is terrible. And I don't know how we can circumvent that idea as being the ideal for Ogden City. But I'm looking for uses or tenants or new owners or just anything to make my property functional. So I'm putting that out there and I hope that I can get some options. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Any other, any other comments?
Yeah, I'm chair seeing no other public comments and we close the public comments section.
Thank you.
Do we need a, we need a motion to do that? Yeah.
Let's go through these really quick. There's.
But I have made that motion before.
Yeah, don't worry. Yeah, I was about ready to say. Why don't we have a second? I'll try to answer a few of these. The 100 Cities Solar Project or the 100 Cities Energy Project has stalled. And I'll look to Janine to kind of maybe answer any of that. Just so you know where we're at, we're still moving forward. We just, I think it's more in the hands of the public.
Yeah, actually, I think there's a couple of things that have happened. They actually did issue an RFP for a developer to develop the solar farm. And there is still some proceedings before the Public Service Commission that are ongoing or hoping that that will be done by the end of the year. Just trying to resolve some issues between the Utah 100 Community Group and Rocky Mountain Power. There's still some negotiations on cost. And that's why they need to know how much a facility is going to cost to be built before they can determine, and then how much Rocky Mountain Power is going to need to stand up the program. So yeah, I mean, it's a lot closer than it was a couple of years ago, but still a ways to go.
I'm glad you were able to, I mean, Laura, out of everyone that should have gone to the water treatment plant, it was you bringing in.
I know. I think that's why they asked me to come.
Yeah, that was great.
Or shut up.
I, yeah, it's an interesting, it's a really interesting.
It's amazing technology they have.
And thank you for the great shout outs to the staff. They do a great job, even though you didn't give us the same shout out. It's okay. I don't even get a smile out of her. I can't even see her from here. Let's see, the fireworks, I think Linda Sanchez had a, I think we continually work with the state legislators and trying to figure out how to do the fireworks. I think most of us on this up here agree with that. We'll come back to the ice raids and those kind of things. Let's see, Deborah, I think, I don't know, she's left. There. I think administration have, I think we walked away, or you walked away last time with a similar question. I don't know if you've been able to, it hasn't improved, maybe working out. Preservation always, Travis, thanks for all of that. I think one of the things that would be very helpful is to make sure that you're in those conversations as we're doing Plan Ogden and Zone Ogden right now and some of that outreach. Teresa, you did reach out to me and I forwarded your email on to, I think, RCED folks. So yeah, I see Jared back there, so hopefully you can hook up with her. And as far as ice raids, I actually think Chief Subie was really good at talking about those last week in our work session and was very clear about the 287G, is that right? And, but Malik, I really liked your suggestions on Know Your Rights campaigns, that's, and the legal resources. And so that was really a great suggestion and how we can help. And I'm probably missing something. And I think Keith, you had similar, similar, the public comments, we've wrestled with that quite a bit, so. Anything that I missed? I missed something else?
Real Estate.
Oh, the real estate. I don't think that that was our campaign. That was a Realtor that is taking advantage of trying to get people to come here. So that's not our campaign, or I don't think it is. At least I haven't heard of that, so. But Ogden is a great place, so I think that Realtor is a smart person trying to get more people to come into our city. Any other council, network comments?
Thank you, covered it.
Mayor, would you like to speak to any of those or did I?
Yes, please.
Spound on any of them?
I'll try to speak to all of them. I'll rewind by going to the acknowledgements where there were questions asked and I'll answer those questions as well, so.
Thank you.
If there's ever questions that come up, please feel free to turn over to us for timely answers as well throughout the meeting. I first wanted to start and say the same thing you said with some accolades for police and fire for the, for the fire at the top of Ninth Street. If any of you have been to the site itself, the proximity of danger is really, really shaking. To see just how close the homes are there, how close they are to the open space and to see how close they were to burning was really telling. And it shows the amount of professionalism that I think all of us are hearing about and reading about of our fire department. They did an exceptional job on the ground to make sure that that didn't get worse than it was. We have an awesome relationship between our police and our fire department as well. And we often hear it on the inside, so I want to share it to you guys externally, that when a big fire event happens, you often hear the police department brag about our firefighters. When a big police event happens, you hear our firefighters do the same about our police department. That absolutely happened this week. We had a summary from a duty lieutenant during the incident that talked about, while police was going out and working on knocking on doors and clearing homes to make sure people were safe, they were really blown away by the professionalism of the fire department. And then I heard the fire department talk about how quickly our police department reacted and responded and were able to get to every door and get people, excuse me, get people evacuated as quickly as possible. So I'm really thankful that we have such a strong group on both sides and that they work so closely together. Both sides deserve a lot of praise for making sure it didn't get worse than it was. We're really mindful of what's coming on the 24th. Want to reassure you guys, reassure the public as well, that we're taking the 24th very seriously as well as the days before and after where people are allowed to light off fireworks. We're going to have an ops plan in place for, that builds on the experiences we had during the 4th, including the input we've gotten from council members, including a council member higher about what you're experiencing on the North End. We're seeing similar things in our patrols as well, where there's a, there's different amounts of cooperation with the ordinance north to south throughout the city. And so we're going to be really focused on, focused communications in the areas where we have the most concerns up on the North End. We've got tools to help with that. I want to make sure that we're addressing trailheads and parking lots, et cetera, and activity there. We'll make sure that we have an ops plan that puts priority in the areas of patrol where they're needed the most. I'll go down the list of things that came up in the order that came up. If I miss anything, let me know. I also want to thank the council for supporting us in our proposal to appropriate the $58,000 and some more in change of funds for Marshall White Center scholarships. That's the final piece that allows us to have both a tiered rate structure for residents and non-residents, non-residents paying a higher fee, that fee offsetting the fees for regular prices for residents. Remembering that we are emphasizing not daily drop-ins, but emphasizing membership fees for creating habits of health, but also making sure that we've got tiered structures so that there's opportunities for access for everybody regardless of your socioeconomic. So non-resident, resident discount. And now we have fee waivers completely through scholarships with partnerships from partners, but also from the scholarship funds that we've appropriated tonight. So thank you for that. Laura, I think it was you that asked about the Community Reinvestment, Community Renewable Energy Act, CREA? The Community Renewable Energy Act, you call it the Solar 100 City?
100 Cities.
Yeah. We're still waiting for a response from Rocky Mountain Power. As per the law, it's still in their court. I am not hearing any progress there. I do think that changes in the private market and especially around federal subsidies for solar and for renewables has probably changed a lot of that, so there's a lot of uncertainty. But we're not hearing anything in terms of it coming back to us and we're still awaiting response there. I did, I sent a message after you asked, Laura, and hadn't heard back on the pickleball courts if they'll have lights. I don't know the answer to that, so. If, yeah, I'll try to remember to answer that.
Actually, our meeting today, Justin said, "Yes, they will be lighted."
Oh, did they? In the work session? Perfect. Perfect, thanks. Oh, you're talking, oh wait, the Lester Park? Yep. Sorry, I was assuming you were talking about Marshall White. I don't know. I don't know why. The. When you, correct.
You're just talking to yourself, Laura.
The comment, Laura, about we should be focused on the projects for quality of life, I think that there's ample opportunities and examples of where we're investing in quality of life, especially for free, reduced and affordable opportunities for access to health, habits of health, outdoor recreation, parks and amenities, et cetera. I recognize that maybe the Wonder Block doesn't have something for everybody, but we are trying to provide a community where everybody has something. So to say that just that project doesn't provide for quality of life for somebody doesn't mean that we aren't providing quality of life elsewhere. I think that we're doing a good job of making sure that we're trying to be balanced in our approach. The question about Park City spillover, I think Council Chair White nailed that. That was not our communication piece. I don't, I don't see it that way. As I read the article, I felt like it was more of a highlight of Ogden Valley. And I felt like the Park City overflow element really applied more to Ogden Valley, but they talked really broadly and just called it Ogden. But really where they talked about our involvement was the downtown and being a close, short commute to the downtown from the Ogden Valley. So I don't view us as a Park City north or whatever. I absolutely want to invest in our people, give our people access to opportunities and let our people have access to, to have the ability to elevate their lives and have upward mobility in life. And I don't really think about Park City very often when I think about our future. So just speaking for me. Malik, just want you to know that I do not take it personally, so don't worry about that. I did not like where things went over the weekend. I recognize that you've got strong feelings and I've got friends and people in the community that stepped up and it got really messy. And that's not the direction I want to see things go. I'm super mindful of the climate of fear as well. And as the mayor, I'm really mindful that my words can add to or settle the climate of fear. And I'm admittedly choosing my words very carefully around this because I don't want to create more fear than there needs to be or there is. You talked about federal overreach, and I'm not entirely sure what that means. But if it means that the federal government is acting illegally, there are means for us to respond to that and we would do that. If we're talking about overreach being something that we don't agree with, that's a different case. But what I want to be mindful of is that I'm watching the news as well. I'm seeing what's happened around the nation. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that we're not seeing any indication of any of those things happening here in our city. We're just not getting any of those indications. And so I'm mindful of reacting to what may or could, or what we're seeing in other cities. So it's hard for me to take proactive steps not knowing that that's happening here or knowing that I'm not seeing any indication of it happening here. So I'm not trying to dodge the questions. I'm not trying to dodge the issue. I'm trying to make sure that we are communicating clearly. Because when I say that we follow the law, when I put out a message, I'm not just communicating to the community members, communicating to our police officers, I mean, communicating to federal officials, making it clear that we are a city of laws, that we expect the law to be followed in our city, that we're going to stay in our lane where we have authority and we're not going to venture into lane where we don't. So when I say things like, "We don't have the authority to enforce immigration," it means we're not participating in immigration checks. We don't have, that's another way of saying it's not legal for us to ask that question. We're not asking or seeking authority to do that. There are very few cities across the country that do. We're not going to be one of them. We've made that clear in our communications. And so it's hard for me to know exactly what to say for every circumstance that may or may not happen, other than to say I'm just not seeing indication of what I see on TV happening here. If I do see that indication, I would absolutely change my posture. You would, you would see me change the way I'm speaking based on what I'm seeing. I'm also confident that whatever I say is never going to be quite enough. It's probably not going to answer everything specifically enough. But I'm doing my best to make sure that we are not one of the cities that we see on the TV. Heath, you asked for clarity about if OPD is participating or not. I think I mentioned that earlier. We are not participating in that. We're focused on reduction of crime and crime alone. We don't have any authority, nor would it be legal for us to participate in enforcing immigration law. Deborah, I heard more specific requests from you. It was my understanding that our team reached out to you on this issue. It sounds like it didn't answer your question. So I know specifically what you're going to, what you're asking for now. If you want to stay after and talk with Mara, you're welcome to do that. But I don't want you spending money needlessly. I am getting a lot of pressure from both directions around landmarks right now, just in the last couple of days, actually. So we will be pushing out a advertisement for new landmarks commissioners. This is an issue that just suddenly heated up, but I, just for me, I know that in the neighborhood, that's not the case, but it's on my desk and I, and I recognize that. There's a balance between historic preservation and private property rights that we're trying to hit. And it doesn't sound like we're quite hitting that. So that's an issue that needs a lot of attention and I'm committed to give it detention. It has been a topic of discussion for Mara and I a lot in the last couple of days. I think, I think I covered everything on my sheet.
Going through my list as you were going through.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Comments from council members? I just have one. Malik, I apologize. Your, it's that, your email ended up in my junk and I really apologize that because I would have responded to you, so I'm, I'm, it's junk, so, sorry. Any other comments? All right.
All right, with that.
Next on our agenda is a consideration to adjourn into a closed session.
Chair, I'd make that motion. We adjourn into a closed session.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Graff to adjourn into a closed session. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Richie.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hare.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye, that passes. We will adjourn from the closed session.